All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 21st meeting of the Village Board of Trustees for Cornwall and Hudson. May I have a motion to, I'll make a motion to open up the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. First up, public comment. I'll open the floor to public comment. Does anybody in the audience like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on. Next up, we have our meeting minutes, so. Okay, I'll make a motion, we'll go, you have how many? One, two, three, four, four sets. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 21st of 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, just a technicality, I have to abstain from that. I was not present yet.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 19th of 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Tiff, you, all right. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 16th of 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 24th, 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, moving on to the monthly department reports. First, we'll start with the treasure report. Okay. So for the month of June, the monthly water report, village was $224,328.30. The town was $234,978.70, for a total of $490,459,306.37, representing warrant number seven, in the amount of $461,434.95. The year-to-date revenue expenditure reports by fund are as follows. The general fund revenue is $3,931,260.39. Expenditures equaled $1,798,726.68. The water fund revenue reflected $1,772,520.75, with expenditures of $910,474.80. As for the sewer funds revenue, the amount to $257,896.61, with expenditures of $18,235.30, for a total receipts of $6,024,608.66, which equates to 61.5% anticipated revenues. There's $2,727,436.78 in anticipated expenditures through June, and that equates to about 30.5%. The balance collected for the sewer capital was $724,684.87 through June. The total taxes collected through June were $2,844,148.91, which equates to 94%. As for our nine-class interest year-to-date, as of June 30th, by fund, the average monthly yield was 4.137. In general, we've garnered $17,671.55. For water, it was $10,624.53 in interest. Sewer, $6,442.93. And the fire department general, $427.72. All right. Any questions regards to that? Okay. All right, moving on, building department. Tiff, can you handle that one? Because Dave, oh, I forgot to mention, Dave Carnley cannot make this meeting as he's on vacation with his family. So, Tiff.
Certainly. Building department report for June 2025. Building permits issued were 16. Certificate of compliance slash occupancy issued were 10. On-site inspections were 24. Violations were three. Stop-work orders, zero. Municipal searches, one. Solar panels, zero. And fire inspections, two, signed by our code enforcement officer, Manny Carmona.
Manny, anything to note?
No, I've already spent enough time talking to you all week, so I'm good.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the fire department. Bill?
Village of Cornwall and Hudson Board of Fire Commissioners' report for June 2025. There were 10 automatic alarms, one call canceled en route, mutual aid boat call. There were five drills, six EMS calls, one funeral, two hazardous conditions, one mutual aid to other departments, one outdoor grill fire, two public relations and recruitment events, one training event, and one work detail, for a total volunteer hours of 243, and a total of 31 events. The department answered 100% of their calls. Five of the automatic alarms were caused by the heat wave in June. Firefighter Maggie Sweeney has completed and passed the National Firefighter One exam. Firefighter Steve Calamari continues his training in arson investigation. Tower ladder 413 is scheduled for replacement in 2028. Last year, the village board directed that we pursue the option of mounting a refurbished aerial scope ladder on a new Seagrave chassis. We continue to work on this, but Seagrave is slow to respond to our request for a proposal. Item six, the 2022 Tahoe staff car has been out of service since May 16th. The dealer is waiting for a back-ordered throttle body. We have no indication of when the vehicle will be back in service. Item seven, squad 411 developed a leak in the automatic lubrication system. Eugene Conley found and repaired the leak. And number eight, the lettering of engine 412 was delayed. It is expected to be returned on July 7th. And that is per Chairperson Rick Jampolo and the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Just a quick question regards to 412. That's been in service, right? Or has not been in service? Wouldn't, Charlie, or?
No, we just got it back on Thursday or Friday.
Okay. When, I just, I can't remember, Charlie, when did we purchase it? December? Okay. All right. So it's gonna, so you have it back? It's now, it's now in service?
It'll be in service shortly.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that, that's the one from Mount Sinai, the one?
Yes.
To replace the, yeah.
The 60,001, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's back in the village, but it hasn't been placed back into service yet.
Yes. Okay.
That's clear.
Yep. Okay, next up, we have the police department. Lori Beth.
Monthly police report, June 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025. 397 total calls for service. We have zero felonies, one misdemeanor trespass, two harassment, aggravated harassment. There's zero arrests, we have zero felonies, one misdemeanor, one violation, one arrest warrant, and zero warrants from other PDs. Vehicle and traffic, one personal injury accident, four property damage accidents, 27 traffic summonses issued, traffic warnings issued 15, parking summonses issued three, traffic enforcement posts eight, speed radar sign postings three. Noncriminal activity, we have 10 fire response calls, three domestic incidents, three alarm response calls, two noise complaints, three suspicious incident calls, 11 animal complaints, and zero disorderly persons. Departmental assists, we have town of Cornwall, seven EMS, 14, other agencies, zero, other police agencies, three, welfare check, zero, citizen assist, three, other COH department assists, one. During the month of June 2025, all Cornwall and Hudson PD officers participated in firearms training and qualification at the Town of New Windsor firearms in range, New Windsor, New York. During the month of June 2025, Cornwall and Hudson PD assisted with traffic and security for the annual CCHS senior prom Riverfront pitcher-taking event. Respectfully, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
Any questions for the chief? Chief, anything to note?
I'm not sure if you all received my recent emails. New York State Police are gonna be assisting us this week with traffic enforcement on 218 Bayview Avenue.
Great.
This is a response to a response letter I sent out to them about a week and a half ago. Also, this Wednesday, both myself and Officer Thompson are gonna be attending Napalmstead to speak with campers about police safety.
Okay, great. One question, I know you sent the letter out to both state police and county sheriff's department.
Correct.
Have they gotten back to you?
I haven't heard back from the sheriff's.
Okay. All right, well, you know, maybe we'll get a second shot. You have the state police help us out, and then maybe Orange County help us out another, another date. That would be great. Okay, thanks for doing that, chief, I appreciate it.
Actually, chief, what's our current complement of officers that are actually hired on the books?
I have three full-timers, and including myself, nine part-timers.
So we're full, that's our, that's our full roster, right?
Technically down one part-time officer. We're budgeted for nine, nine part-time officers, not including myself.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, chief? Seeing none. Trustee Galliano, would you mind doing the Department of Public Works?
Certainly. Department of Public Works, June 2025. Trash collected for the month, 116.25 tons. Recycling collected for the month, 13.8 tons. Yard waste collected for the month, 100 yards. No electronic items recycled. Repairs and maintenance, village-owned vehicles and equipment, mowing and trimming of village-owned properties, sweeping of streets, blacktop patching mountain area in preparation for fiber mat, prepared the park and cleaned up for Riverfest, assisted police department with traffic control devices for Riverfest, as well as the senior prom photo night. And some news, the new Bandit Wood chipper has been delivered and is in service. And Superintendent Halverson, along with working leader Wayne Yeoman, attended the annual highway school in Ithaca, New York. And this is courtesy of our superintendent of public works, David Halverson.
All right, any questions of Dave? First, Dave. All right, seeing none. Let's move on to the water department. Trustee Brain.
Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Department, June 2025 monthly report. The monthly production was 25,291,000 gallons, with a daily average of 843,000 gallons. Sampling, we collected 24 samples in accordance with DOH regulations, distributed and collected three-year lead and copper samples. Treatment, routine operations and maintenance. As for transmission and distribution, there were 72 utility markouts completed, completed six water service shut-offs or turn-ons at owner's request, weed whacked around fire hydrants, painted fire hydrants, curb valve boxes were repaired at 30 Maple Road and 146 Bayview Avenue, and blacktop, blacktoped leak sites. In meters, they read all commercial water meters, there were 11 final water meter readings completed, five residential water meters replaced, 11 water line inspections completed, five miscellaneous repairs completed, and installed a water meter pit at 67 Weeks Avenue. Property maintenance, routine weekly property maintenance, mowed dams in Black Rock Forest, constructed retaining wall at Black Rock Water Treatment Plant. As to notes, provided public information booth at the annual Riverfest event, staff attended continuing education training with the Hudson Valley Waterworks Conference, and completed training and began utilizing the GIS mapping equipment and software. Respectfully submitted, Michael P. Trainer, Senior Water Superintendent.
All right, anything for Mike?
There's one fire hydrant that I know is out of service, is that there's a gasket coming, something, I mean.
Correct, it was involved, but with an accident, motor坏了, waiting under caution.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to EMS. Trustee Paleota, please.
New Windsor EMS report for June 2025. 100% response rate for primary areas. Call volume, 378 total responses, 246 in New Windsor, 80 Cornwall, 14 Cornwall and Hudson, 25 Highland Falls, one town of Newburgh, five city of Newburgh, two Montgomery, zero West Point, one Woodbury, and four Blooming Grove. Response times, 6 minutes and 58 seconds in New Windsor, 7 minutes and 8 seconds in Cornwall, 6 minutes and 52 seconds Cornwall and Hudson, 7 minutes and 1 second overall total. Operational, no vehicle accidents, all vehicles in service and operational. A new fly car will be coming next month to replace a 2017 fly car, older fly car will be sold. Updated bylaws approved. Audit is ongoing, should be completely, completed shortly. ECAS grants are still processing, awaiting the 2024 contract to be sent for reimbursement. Issues with New Windsor Station being addressed with town for repairs. Hired three new part-time employees to offset others who have moved. MVP advised health insurance will increase 16.5 for 2026. 2026 budget being worked on, Cornwall rates have been set for the next year, which is at a 12% increase over 2025. Call volume is down 500 calls from same period last year. If this trend continues, we will see a decrease in revenue of $390,000. As always, reach out with any concerns. Michael Big Chief.
All right. Okay, that's, we're complete with the department reports, moving on to resolutions. All right, the first one up is we have the Hasbrook Avenue Water Main Project. If you recall, after the storm, the tropical storm Ida back in 2021, we applied for, and we got a FEMA grant, an amount of $372,000 to repair a six-inch water main along Hasbrook, Hasbrook Avenue in the, in the town. But we adjusted that, and because there's a 16-minute, 16-inch main that's already there, so FEMA allowed us to use the money instead of, instead of taking out the, the six-inch water main. So, at this point, our Genio Brothers is doing work for the town over there. Mike, you could take it away, because this involves the emergency purchase of materials and equipment.
Sure. So, the town's embarked on a $7 million drainage project for the Hasbrook Avenue, Roberts Road, Sheldon Drive area, the town's multi-year design and build-out. The six-inch water main is in its way, the new drainage pipe. Due to Department of Health regulations, there has to be at least 10 feet of separation between the two pipes. If there's no separation, then they have to encase our water main in concrete, which we don't really prefer that they do that. So, what we, we're going to do is we're going to eliminate the six-inch water main, transfer all the services that are connected to it over to the 16-inch, and then our Genio Brothers will be able to install the new drainage pipe without any concern for separation. The town has agreed, along with our Genio, that they will provide excavation and backfill of the, the work that we need to do. The village is going to provide staff to do the mechanical work, as well as purchase the water main material. Total cost of village, not including our staff salaries and whatnot, is around $90,000. As the mayor alluded to, we were allotted $372,000 for that repair. So we're gonna come out around $270,000 to the good. And that, that money was used last year to purchase equipment, in terms of our new crane truck, the trailer and whatnot, which was all approved by FEMA.
And the reason why, so Mike had called me, how long, was this like two weeks ago, Mike?
About three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago. Inquiring about the emergency purchase. We have bidding requirements, but because of the accelerated work that's being done by our Genio Brothers in town, it would take too long for us to bid out, and for prices for the material and the equipment. So Mike asked me, can we do an emergency purchase? And I believe they actually started it today, Mike?
They did. They started work today. So the town, if the town did not get this drainage work done this summer, it'd be put off for another year. The schedule, until they found the conflict with the water line, was for it to be completed this year. So rather than hold that up, we want to get this out of the way. While we didn't go out to specific bidding, we did procure three price quotes from different material providers, so we did get the lowest-priced price line.
Okay, thanks for that description, Mike. Any questions from the board? All right, so pursuant to that discussion, I will make a proposal resolution, and ask for its adoption. Whereas the town of Cornwall is currently undertaking a drainage improvement project, including required excavation work along Hasbrook Avenue, and whereas the village of Cornwall and Hudson is obligated to provide water services to the residents within the Hasbrook Avenue area, whereas the excavation work has revealed that in order to properly complete the drainage project, the village's water mains must be modified to protect and improve the public health, and whereas the delay caused by the bidding process would cause inordinate delay, financial harm, and a detriment to the health of the town and its residents, and if done separately at a future time, would significantly and imprudently increase the cost to village residents. And whereas the modification of the village's water infrastructure must be made coincident with the town's drainage improvement project, such that the village of Cornwall and Hudson cannot meet the bidding timelines of GML Section 103, and whereas general municipal law, Section 103 was enacted to guard against favoritism, improvidence, fraud, and corruption through the use of public bidding, and to ensure the prudent and economical use of public monies for the benefit of taxpayers, and to facilitate the acquisition of goods and services of maximum quality at the lowest cost, and whereas Section 103 permits emergency purchases to be made when they arise due to unforeseen circumstances affect public health or safety and cannot await competitive bidding, the village of Cornwall and Hudson finds the unforeseen circumstances requiring the purchase of water main valves, materials, and rental equipment constitutes an emergency purchase under GML Section 103, subsection four. Whereas the water superintendent is in accordance with the village's procurement policy, has obtained three quotes for materials required for the water infrastructure work, now therefore be resolved that the village board, the village of Cornwall and Hudson hereby authorizes the emergency purchase of a 16-inch insertion valve from Jack Farrelly Company, at a cost of $31,533.91. The purchase of water main materials from Schmitz Wholesale at a cost of $29,465.91. The purchase of water main materials from Ferguson Waterworks at a cost of $14,796.14, and the rental of a hydrovac excavator at the cost of $12,495. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion?
Just noting that the funds are available in the capital improvement line for the water department, and understanding all the, the mitigating factors that made it necessary to make this an emergency, but getting the three quotes, I'm, I'm in favor.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, next up, we have pavilion rental. We have three of them, right? Yes. Okay, we have three, three person, three people want to rent out our pavilion, along with the parking spaces that go along with it. So, one is a Lauren Rancinelli, and that is for September 20th. The other one is the Cornwall Democrat Committee, and that is for August 8th. And the other one is for Roederchan?
The Roederchan.
Roederchan. And that is for September 13th. Two of them involve alcohol, correct? One is the?
Three.
Three, all three do, okay. So, I will make a motion to approve the consumption of alcohol on village property for the Roederchan, the Cornwall Democrat Committee, and the Rancinelli applications for the pavilion rental. And to approve the parking spaces that are requested with the application for the Rancinelli and the Cornwall Democrat Committee. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, next up, we have Doc in the Box. All right, so, we have a, we have all three gentlemen here from a film company. The bottom line is, they're, they would like to use our waterfront, particularly the Cornwall Yacht Club area, as well as our Taft Seaman Chapel, that's being currently rented out by, that portion of the property being rented out by the Cornwall Yacht Club. They're gonna be filming, hold on, Austin, you gave me the, I got it, I got it, I wrote, I wrote.
You needed it.
Okay, no, I got it, okay. So they're gonna be filming on July 28th, the 30th, July 28th is a Monday, then the 30th a Wednesday, August 1st a Friday, and August 4th Monday, right? So that's, that's set in stone now, right? Okay.
But yeah, we just, we just got that updated right before coming.
Okay, no, no worries. So, it's primarily gonna be on that property, in the Cornwall Yacht Club property. They're going to need, they're gonna use the, the trailer part, where right now, where we have people park their trailers for their boats, they're gonna use that area for those, for those four days. Those people are gonna be displaced in regards to parking their trailer. I'm gonna have the chief, they'll be able to park elsewhere. I'm gonna have the police department liberally enforce any trailer parking for those four days for the people that we, we displace. So, they've already provided their, their application. They've also provided the certificate of insurance that was attached to the application. The, I'll, I'll make the motion, but Austin, we have three representatives, we have Austin, Hakim, and Dan, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Would you like to say anything else, Austin, about?
The only thing I would say in addition to the parking that we discussed previously, is we might on, it might, it's probably not gonna be every day, but we might require just a little bit outside of that parking, that's kind of like along the?
Parallel, yeah, parallel to the railroad tracks?
Kind of, yeah.
Okay.
And the part we talked about on Friday?
Yes.
And then today, I was talking to my transportation captain about just a little bit, almost touching up against that parking that we're asking for.
Okay.
On the railroad track, railroad track side of the parking lot?
Yes.
But it would probably be 100 feet of parking space, if we need to use it.
Okay.
I know you had mentioned what you did about not upsetting CSX, but I don't think it would kind of get into that territory.
Right, okay. So it's just the trailer park area and the area, kind of like right in front of it, is what you're saying?
Leading, leading towards the yacht club.
Got it, understood, okay. So, as part, as part of that, I had already discussed this with the production company, Austin and the team, we're gonna be charging them $1,000 a day and $200 a day for the parking. Okay? So, so, I will, first, any, any, any questions for Austin and team? Dan or Hakim? Okay. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the audio, audiovisual permit for Doc in the Box Corporation at, at the Cornwall Yacht Club with a fee of $1,000 per day, plus $200 per day for parking at Dunning Memorial Park. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Austin?
Two things I wanted to add.
Yes.
We do have two separate days that require drone.
Yeah, I forgot, I gotta actually put the dates in there, sorry. So, but go ahead.
So that would be on Monday, the 28th, and Monday, the 1st.
Yes.
Yes. And I understand that we have to notify West Point and?
That's Stewart.
That's kind of like, just as a courtesy.
Yes.
And in addition to that, if possible, and maybe we can discuss this separately, but it might work in our favor for the Wednesday filming, to park the trucks the night before, as opposed to the morning of. And that's just, that's just a possibility, that's something we might have discussed.
Yeah, we kind of, we discussed that. When you were saying the night before, like what time are you thinking?
I would say tentatively somewhere between 8:00 PM and 10:00 PM.
Yeah, that should, that, I don't think that's gonna be a problem, so. And to clarify, to win my motion, the dates of the filming would be July 28th, July 30th, wait a minute, let me make sure I got the, July 28th?
The 30th.
July 30th, August 1st, and August 4th. Okay. And it's also subject to two things. One is, you guys were turning the Taft Seaman Chapel into the condition that it was now, you know, afterwards. So I know the Cornwall Yacht Club has items in there, and you're gonna return that. And what was the last thing, Joe? It was, you already have the insurance, I think that was, I think that was it. So, can I get a second? So can I get a second? I don't know if I got a second.
I seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just on the drone days, there's also Stewart Air National Guard Base and Airport. I have a hobbyist drone that gives me warnings to say you have to, you know, fly below a certain thing. So just contingent upon making sure that you have all the associated permits for the drone flying as part of your stuff.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Gentlemen, you could stay or you can go. It's up to you. Thank you for coming by. And you've got my number, you can call me, or Hakim, or Dan, all right? Thanks, guys. All right, take care.
Thank you. Thank you for choosing Cornwall on Hudson.
All right, take care, guys. Next up, Diane. Okay, the Cornwall Yacht Club lease. So how long has this been going on, Joe? It's been well?
Over two years.
Yeah, all right. So going back over a couple of years ago, with respect to the Cornwall Yacht Club, there were two things going on. One, there was a boundary dispute in regards to Shore Road, that portion being in front of the Cornwall Yacht Club. They had put up some signs for no parking signs. Our code enforcement officer told them to take it down, we issued them a violation, and from there on, we, both our council and the council for Cornwall Yacht Club, we had several meetings. They did a legal analysis of the same in regards to, in regards to Shore Road, who owned it. We claimed that we owned it.
You actually authorized commencement of litigation?
Yeah, we actually authorized commencement of litigation. But before we get to that part, so there are two parts of it, as I said. One was Shore Road, and Joe will give us some more detail about that. The second part was, we brought up was the lease. If you remember, they had a lease from 1986. That's essentially a 100-year lease. It's, there's a renewal option of 25 years each option, and it's exercised by them without any ability for us to say no. So two of the representatives from the Cornwall Yacht Club, Steve Longinat and Steve Kondraki, after we had somewhat of an impasse both with Shore Road and the Cornwall lease of our, of our property, which is basically a 50 by 100-foot square. That's the very northern end of the, of the Cornwall Yacht Club, where the chapel is going towards the municipal parking lot. So Steve Longinat and Steve Kondraki reached out to us, and we, Jim Galliano, the former mayor, mayor and I, took it upon ourselves to meet with them without council being involved, so we didn't have to expend additional monies because by that time, we had already spent quite a bit on, on the dispute in regards to Shore Road between our council and their council. After, after negotiating for over about a year and a half, their two representatives were very fair. We've come to, we've come to an agreement. So the highlights of the agreement are this. Well, first, pursuant to their lease, like I said, it's essentially a 100-year lease. They were paying $250 a year. We worked out a new, a lease amendment, and just the highlights of the lease are this. One is that they'll be paying $1,000 per year with a 3% escalation. What people have to understand is, is I know it doesn't sound like a lot, $1,000 as opposed to $250 per year. The provision as part of the deed and the covenants that go along with the deed to this property is that if the property is not leased by the Cornwall Yacht Club, it cannot be released to anyone else. It turns, it returns to parkland. So we had an appraisal done two years ago. That wasn't really taken into consideration. So we overestimated, I would say, what the value is, what we could lease, because we can't. We couldn't do it. If they're not leasing it, we pull the lease from them, we get nothing. Yes, it becomes parkland, but there's no financial compensation for it. So it's, so the lease amendment includes $1,000 per year with a 3% escalation clause. There's a cutout, a carved-out area for kayak racks. It's going to be, it's on our little map here, but it'll be the corner where the municipal lot meets Shore Road and goes in basically 20, it's about seven feet by almost 30 feet, by 28 feet. We'll be able to hopefully put in about three kayak racks, maybe, maybe more. Five slots on the, on those kayak racks will be for Cornwall Yacht Club members. We will install new fencing. Right now, there's chain link fencing that goes from the water towards Shore Road. We're going to take that down. Deek and the rest of the Dunning U Farm Committee had, we had some trees taken down, some black locust trees, some other trees. Deek and his team are already starting to craft a wooden fence that'll go along with that because our kayak racks, which are also being built by Deek and Dave Nolan, a few other people, are also going to be made from the same wood. So they'll be matching, it'll look, it'll look nice. And the last thing is the term, the terms of the agreement remain the same till, till 2086. So there was a lot of, all I can say is this, there was a lot of back and forth, and they were fair. You know, no one walks away 100% happy, but at the end of the day, there were many, many people have come to me over the years in regards to the kayak racks. I think this is a good start. You know, if this, if this blossoms and we need more kayak area, we'll come up with something. I'm not necessarily, necessarily saying from them, but we'll have other areas. And in regards to the kayak racks, when they're going to be installed and all that, that's one step at a time because we're going to have to take down the fence and put up the new fence, and the new fence is not done. So we also have to consider how we're going to rent out the kayak racks. It's most likely going to be Cornwall and Hudson residents first, and then open up to the town, and then to people outside the town at a, at a graduated rate. But I have some information on that, and we'll, we'll return to you and advise, you know, how that's going to happen. So that's the lease amendment. Any questions from the board in regards to the lease amendment? Okay. Now, I will let Joe explain the disputed Shore Road.
Well, you, Mr. Mayor, you did touch on, on most of it. Just going back to the beginning. As you said, the yacht club had put up some signage and essentially were trying to prevent people from going over Shore Road, which the village really could not, it was a village road. Village really had to take a stand and say, yeah, to remove the signage. Manny issued a notice of violation or a notice to correct at the time. And from there, as you indicated, the village and the yacht club kind of hunkered down onto, into their legal positions. The yacht club said several times, maybe this is no longer a thorough road, or, you know, maybe it was abandoned. They had several different theories. The village said, this has been an open road for 100 years. We maintain it. Under state highway law, we maintain it, maintain it for more than 10 years. It's, it's a village road. So those are the kinds of posturing that we went through at the time. And what we decided to do was to retain a surveyor because as you can imagine, there can be a good faith dispute over 100 years of where the road started, where the right-of-ways were then, where they are now. So essentially, we hired a surveyor. The yacht club made a proposal as to where they believe the proper boundaries either were or should be. We surveyed that. After the surveyor prepared a map, the parties went out several times, maybe at least twice and maybe more to, it was marked in the paint to see what the boundaries were proposed to be. The parties went out there. There, as the mayor said, there have been many, many, many meetings over these two years. So once we got through that, we, we decided, okay, we have an understanding of what we believe the proper boundaries of the road should be. So it was very important to the yacht club, and it's also important to the village, that this agreement have some permanence. Because this has happened, it happened under Mayor Galliano, and it happened before that. This has been kind of an ongoing issue that comes up every couple of years, but for a long, long time, 20 or 30 years. So everybody agreed that if we were going to resolve it, it had to be permanent. And as I said before, the village at one point had authorized the commencement of a declaratory judgment action to say, this is a village road, and we're going to use it. So again, the parties got past that. We came to an understanding of what the proper boundaries of the road should be. And with, when we decided that, that did leave the yacht club with an area that they could use for their own private parking. So that's essentially what the, we'll call, we call it the settlement document is. There's no actual litigation. The village never actually commenced the suit, but the yacht club asked us to put those settlement words in there, which is fine. So it's a memorandum of understanding. It's a settlement agreement. And we're going to take an action, which is probably the next resolution. Under the New York State Village Law, this board can determine the boundaries of the road. You can extend a road, narrow a road, et cetera, dedicate a road, close a road. So under Village Law 6612, you can narrow the road, or in this case, kind of set the boundaries, so to speak. All you need to do in order to do that is to have a public hearing. So that will be scheduled for the August meeting in an upcoming resolution. And what we're going to do, again, this is the idea to give it the permanence that the parties wanted. We're going to have this written agreement, and we're also going to modify, or, well, we intend to modify. We'll have a public hearing in which it's proposed to provide for a no parking area within the boundaries of the road itself. So essentially, yacht clubs accommodating the village in some respect, the village is accommodating the yacht club in some respect. We have to put all these pieces together, hold the two public hearings, listen to the public, adopt the law if the board feels it appropriate, adopt a resolution narrowing the road if the board feels it's appropriate. And if we were to do those things, then both the lease agreement and the settlement agreement would then fall into place, and they could be executed.
Okay. Any questions of general regards to Shore Road? All right. So I'm going to propose a resolution first to the, with respect to the lease amendment. So I'll make the following motion and move for its adoption. Whereas in or about, in the summer of 2022, a dispute arose between the village of Cornwall and Hudson and the Cornwall Yacht Club regarding the placement of certain signage by the Cornwall Yacht Club on or around its property adjacent to Shore Road in the village. And whereas in conjunction with the dispute, council for the Cornwall Yacht Club and council for the village of Cornwall and Hudson each set forth their respective legal positions regarding the question of whether Shore Road was a public road or had been abandoned by the village. And whereas multiple productive meetings were held between the yacht club and the village beginning in the spring of 2023. And whereas the, whereas the parties have now reached an agreement to resolve the above-mentioned dispute, an integral part of which is an agreement to amend the existing March 17, 1986 lease between the village and the Cornwall Yacht Club regarding the lease term, annual rent, and fair market lease value, among other items. Now therefore be resolved that the village board of the village of Cornwall and Hudson hereby authorizes the mayor to, or the deputy mayor, to execute the above-mentioned, aforementioned lease amendment and such other documents as may be necessary to effectuate the amendment to the existing lease. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you very much, Trustee Brain. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Bill. Moving on to the Shore Road Resolution. I will make the following motion and move for its adoption. Whereas in or about the summer of 2022, a dispute arose between the village of Cornwall and Hudson and the Cornwall Yacht Club regarding the placement of certain signage by the Cornwall Yacht Club on or around its property adjacent to Shore Road in the village. And whereas in conjunction with the dispute, council for the Cornwall Yacht Club and council for the village of Cornwall and Hudson each set forth their respective legal positions regarding the question of whether Shore Road was public road or had been abandoned by the village. Whereas the minis, whereas multiple productive meetings were held between the Cornwall Yacht Club and the village beginning in the, in the spring of 2023. And whereas the parties have now reached an agreement to resolve the above-mentioned dispute, now therefore be it resolved that the village board of the village of Cornwall and Hudson hereby authorizes Mayor James Kane and or Deputy Mayor Dave Carnwright to execute the memorandum of settlement agreement and such documents as may be necessary to effectuate the settlement of the above-described dispute. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, so next up is, let's see. Okay, these are for the public hearings, Joe, right? Okay. All right, so what do we have here? This is for, all right. I'm going to make the following motion and move for its adoption, and this is in regards to scheduling a public hearing to narrow Shore Road. Whereas the Cornwall Yacht Club has advised the village of Cornwall and Hudson that it disputes that Shore Road or a portion of Shore Road adjacent to the yacht club property is a public road. And whereas representatives of the village and the yacht club have met several times and have engaged in negotiations and discussions concerning the public's right to traverse the portion of Shore Road adjacent to the yacht club property. And whereas the village has engaged the services of a land surveyor for the purposes of determining the public boundaries of Shore Road. And whereas the village and the yacht club believe that they have resolved the discrepancy concerning the public's use of Shore Road to the mutual benefit of the village and the yacht club and wish to refine the public boundaries of Shore Road. And whereas the village board wishes to schedule a public hearing pursuant to New York State Village Law section 612 to determine whether the boundaries of Shore Road should be narrowed, i.e. the action. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved pursuant to and in accordance with the provisions of section 617.6 of the Regulations Implementing New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. And the village, the village board determines that the proposed action is subject to SECR. And it is further resolved that the village board hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the consideration, review, and determination of the significance of the aforementioned action pursuant to SECR Regulation Section 617 Subsection 6. Since there are no other agencies that have authority to approve the action, and it's further resolved that pursuant to SECR Regulation Section 617, the village board hereby preliminarily classifies the aforementioned action as an unlisted action, and it's further resolved that the village board hereby schedules a public hearing to consider the action pursuant to New York State Village Law 6-612, and to consider any potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed action for August 8th, excuse me, August 18th, 2025 at 7:01 PM. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you very much, Trustee Brain. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Now, this is the public hearing for concerning the parking on Shore Road. All right, I'm going to make the following motion and move for its adoption. Whereas the Cornwall, the Cornwall Yacht Club has advised the village of Cornwall and Hudson that disputes the Shore Road or a portion of Shore Road adjacent to the yacht club property is a public road. Whereas representatives of the village and yacht club have met several times and have engaged in negotiations and discussions concerning the public's right to traverse the portion of Shore Road adjacent to the yacht club. Whereas the village has engaged the services of a land surveyor for the purposes of determining the public boundaries of Shore Road. Whereas the village has scheduled the public hearing pursuant to New York State Village Law 6-612 to determine whether the boundaries of Shore Road should be narrowed. And whereas if the village determines to modify the public boundaries of Shore Road, the current parking restrictions set forth in Village Code Section 155-48 would need to be amended. Whereas the village board wishes to schedule a public hearing to determine whether the parking provisions set forth in Village Code Section 155-48 should be amended. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that pursuant to and in accordance with the provisions of section 617.6 of the Regulations Implementing New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, the village board determines that the proposed action is subject to SECR. And it's further resolved, the village board hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the consideration, review, and determination of the significance of the aforementioned action pursuant to SECR Regulation 617. of the aforementioned action pursuant to SECR Regulation six, one, seven, section six, one, seven, since there are no other agencies that have authority to approve the action. And it's further resolved that pursuant to SECR Section six, one, seven, the village board hereby preliminarily classifies the aforementioned action as an unlisted action and it's further resolved that the village board hereby schedules a public hearing to consider an amended, an amendment to the parking provisions contained in Village Code, section one, five, five dash forty-eight, and to consider any potential adverse impacts of the proposed action for August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven oh, at seven P M. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. We had two additional items for resolutions. The after speak, Storm King Engine, the fire department would like to surplus the nineteen eighty-nine Pierce Engine. And Joe has already checked with our council with respect to the insurance payment. We, we can do, we can surplus since now you confirmed that, right?
Yeah, no restrictions.
Okay, all right. So I will make a motion for the village to surplus the nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen eighty-nine Pierce Engine with title identification number one, P nine, C A zero, two, D eight, K A zero, four, oh, five, seven, nine. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, okay. Then another one, let's see, Dave. This is yours. Oh, I have it right here. Okay, Dave. All right. So Dave has asked us the, what are our superintendent, DPW Superintendent Dave Havas and is requesting that the village authorize the posting of a promotional position, the assistant, that of being the Assistant Leader of Sanitation, Bob Scholwaller. Yes, retired in two thousand fourteen. And since then, Eric Vandemark has been in that position the entire time. So he's well deserving of it. So I will make a motion for the, to authorize the posting of the promotional position with the Department of Public Works, that being the Assistant Leader of Sanitation. And this promotion will be based on work performance and added job responsibilities. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. All right, moving on to other business, the property maintenance violations. So this is in respect to Washington Avenue, right? Road Avenue ten, Washington. So at our last, at our last meeting, we, we authorized two things. We authorized pursuant to our public hearing and our findings and determinations, we authorized the exterior of the building of the premises to be cleaned up. A portion of it was also too to have pest control to come out. I think that was the other thing, Manny. So Dave, we haven't done, in regards to, have we done that yet? And I know.
No, we didn't, we didn't do anything because we had to wait thirty days.
Thirty days, correct.
I spoke to council, we waited to thirty days pass.
Right.
Board's resolution from last month. And that time has came up at the end of last week and I was not there and Manny, you know, neither one of us were in the office, so we'll get that together this week.
And most likely you're going to, you're going to contract this out, right?
We're going to, we're not going to do it ourselves.
Okay. Let's just make sure whatever bills we have, it comes up here to our treasurer. So, and actually endorse too, because we need to make sure that's included, re-levered on their property, on their taxes. Part two of that was the interior. And that is cleaning out the interior. However, we're not moving forward with that until we have a Supreme Court action. So there's no update on that, right?
Well, not yet. It is something we're working on, right? And I would suggest tonight, the board actually ratified the prior minutes from that resolution in order. So I think what, I was going to speak with the code enforcement officer. We'll get a copy of the resolution as approved. We'll have it served just so we have met all the statutory criteria. And then there will be a thirty day period where the property owner may clean the, clean the interior. And in interim, we will move forward with what, the process.
Okay. Very good. All right, next up was the, was the, the tax assessment for our water property back in, it was, it went before the town board of assessment or review. It was denied. And because we didn't have enough supporting data, it was insufficient. They denied that on June, June third. That was not, we're not surprised about that because we didn't have our appraisal done and submitted by the time, by that time. So what we're doing right now is pursuant to that, we authorized our attorney to proceed with an Article seventy-eight. And I know that's being drafted and it'll be filed by June thirty-first. And just so people know, after that is filed, what will normally happen is that the, the village and the town will enter into some negotiations with the town assessor sometime, probably in, in mid to late August. And then we'll see how the negotiations proceed. And if they don't turn out the way we think it should, then we can proceed with the Article seventy-eight.
Article seven.
Let's go to Article seven. Okay. Mike Stone Hollow, any update on, on that, the performance bond?
No, I spoke with Mr. McKay last week about that, about some different options going forward. The developer still being non-responsive to requests from the town and from the village.
Okay. All right. Well, I know that, I know the town is really the kind of lead on this, so we've got to follow. All right. All right, just keep us apprised. Thanks, Mike. All right, with respect to the connector pollinator trail. Yeah, I've gotten a lot of calls about this. So as you can see up near the, near the sign, well, not calls, people have big comments to me. Yes, I think I got one call, maybe two. So that, the, I will call them the pollinator club, the connector pollinator. Nicole Augstein, Kate Crimsky and Carla Castillo and a few others, as well as the Cornwall Youth Garden Club are involved in that. You can see where our sign is up at the, on Hudson Street. When we get to the, you know, where the town and the village meets, they put some boulders there. The idea was to, to build that up, to put in native pollinating plants. They put the rock, they put the boulders in. We've had, we've had a few complaints about it. I will say that Nicole Augstein and the rest of the team, and she came up with a plan and she does this for a living. I forget what her title is. She's a.
Landscape architect.
Landscape architect. And so people were questioning it. So I am actually meeting with the team on Wednesday night to further discuss how, and Dave is going to be there too at, at seven P M. as well as Tommy Gishwin, to see how we can adjust things. Because we are, we did spend some money on some pollinating plants. We want to make it look nice. We want to make it flow into there. Remember, this is part of the connection between the town and the, and the village. So it's not being ignored. It's empty right now, but it's empty for a purpose and we will get there. So I just ask for your patience on that.
This explains a formerly cryptic text message I, exchange I had where I said, hey, looks great. And then received a really defensive response that made me think I was, and I was like, no, no, I mean it. I, I like to see that it started. I'm sure it's going to look great. The response was, it'll look great. It's going to be, so it's under construction. I guess, please pardon our appearance, I think is the main message, right?
Yes, under construction is good. All right.
Realized that people were upset.
Bill, Trustee Brain, give us an update on the charging, EV charging stations.
As village residents may notice, there are now two chargers installed, preliminarily installed without electric service yet. One at the bandstand parking lot adjacent, near, nearby the elementary school. And the other one is down at Donahue Memorial Park in the south parking lot in the northeast corner of that parking lot. And thanks to our DPW for trenching down at Donahue Park to accommodate the, the location. You know, from our earlier discussion regarding the yacht club, people may know there's, you know, we're juggling a few uses down there. So we agreed to put a, a charging station there. Originally, it was intended to be pretty close and would get in the way of the kayak racks and, and the work we're doing with the yacht club. So it's over in that other corner. They're unobtrusive. They look nice, modern equipment. And the process is ongoing to, Central Hudson's going to provide the electrical service to those. And we will configure those for the pricing and the, and the software that people would need to activate those chargers if they want to plug in their car while they're down there for a picnic or a kayaking trip or up in the business district, going to dinner or attending a bandstand concert or a fireman's fair, for instance. So those will, those will come online. I'm not, I don't know the exact date. And we have some decisions to make about cost and, and things like that. And also just sort of when they're reserved for electric park, electric car charging and so on. Following on with Captain Trainer's request or the fire department's, or fire company's request, no, fire department's request, to make sure that they're in the bandstand area, there's, we've asked them to center the charger a little bit so that we, a little bit off-center from the current painted lines. We're going to re-stripe there to make sure that there's a, a little bit of a buffer between the two EV charging spots and the next non-designated spot, just in case firefighters need to get between those cars. There'll be a little bit extra width between. Other than that, you know, moving forward and it's good. I think it'll count, help count toward our bronze certification for our climate smart communities program, along with the pollinator trail and probably ten other things.
Yes.
So, it's all good.
All right. Thank you very much, Trustee Brain on that. Before we go to the two fire department items, I'll just move up the PBA contract. I just put this on, on the agenda just to let people know that we, the village and the PBA have come to an agreement. We actually came to an agreement months ago. There was just some, a couple of sticky points. One was dealing with a holiday provision and another was a length of service provision. We've worked that out with the, the PBA and their union rep. And as in the next week or so, they'll be voting on the, on the, the new contract. So I plan to bring it before the village board next month at our, at our August meeting. So let's move on to, okay, our last two things. Let's move on to the firefighter training stipend. Charlie, I got your, your write-up in regards to, I'd asked you, where did I just put that? Hold on. I asked you to detail. Just was reading it. Hold on. Oh, no, no, no. Hold on. I literally just had it. You put together, I had asked you to, to advise me over the past couple of years, what, what type of training everyone had gotten. And you did do that. And if I could just find it. And you advised that it was going to cost somewhere, well, the path had, had we instituted it in those previous years, it was going to be between twenty-one hundred and four thousand dollars, right? Charlie, what I want to ask you was this. First, thank you for that. Second, in regards to, in regard to the training, what, what is your, what's the proposal for training for the, for the year? Meaning, you, you gave me a snapshot of what you'd done in the past couple of years. I'm saying for the upcoming year. Meaning like, have you already, I, I don't know, how do you schedule it out? Is there a signup sheet? Like you already have designated people are going to be doing training?
No, we, we don't. The county puts out the courses as they become available.
Okay.
And then members who are interested, if it fits their schedule, will come to us. They register for the course and the training officer signs off on it.
Do they come out, when do they come out with the list, Charlie?
I don't think they publish a, a list far ahead. They, they come out roughly a month or two before the courses open up.
Okay. Did you have any questions?
I have a quick question if I, if I may, Charlie. So there are some courses, as you've explained it to us, that you can only take one time. There are some, are there any that are, that would be involved in, in this provision and this stipend that are mandatory?
No. The New York State pays for the course that is mandatory. The reimbursement for firefighter one and fire officer one, that comes from New York State. These, these are additional courses that improve skills, improve knowledge, ladder operations, engine company operations, rescue courses. None of those are required by New York State, but we do encourage membership to take.
And are they only able to take them one time? Or do they take them every five years, every ten years, or?
They, they can be taken frequently, but the stipend would only be paid once.
Understood. Thank you.
Who puts on the trainings?
Orange County Fire Training Center puts them on. Other counties have them also. Our members have gone to Rockland County, Ulster County in the past, but they are state certified trainers.
Do you know what the schedule is for the remainder of the year in regards to training that's being offered? I'm trying to get a feel, Charlie, for what, you know, what we're talking about, expenditure, expenditure wise.
I hope the expenditure would go up from four thousand dollars. I hope it is incentive, not because I want to spend money, but because I want people to get training.
Yeah, so do I. I just want to, I just want to make sure we have it in our budget, do it. So, so, no, so go ahead. So I was just asking in regard to the training, I mean, do they, do you know what's coming up the next, for the remainder of the year?
We don't know for the remainder of the year. Right now, I believe there's only one course open that they've just posted. I'm looking at our younger officers if they know what it is.
Am I allowed to talk on this? The state of New York needs a couple of months in advance to put together a, a course for firefighters to attend. Orange County is only allotted a certain amount of hours that the state instructors can teach. All that stuff you can find online. They do not schedule them out, full months, a full year schedule. It's kind of a rolling schedule. So every couple of weeks, you'll get a email from the, you know, a training coordinator at the fire training center and they will publish that. So we do not know what the future holds. There is a firefighter one course coming up. Right now, we have one of our members taking an edge company course. But basically whatever, whatever the demand is through the entire county is what the county will get.
And normally, Tommy, you get how much of a, a lead on it? A couple of weeks or like a thirty days?
Usually a month and a half or two months, but the state themselves need a couple of months, three, four months to plan out who's going to instruct it and all that.
Oh, so there's two parts is, there's, they announce, the county announces is what you're saying? And then the, then the state?
Is the training coordinator at the county fire training will email someone at the state level and say, hey, we're looking to put together a firefighter one course. And they will say, all right, you can, you're allotted this many, you know, instructors. They will then come back and say, hey, fire departments, we're putting together this course on the state. Please have your interested members sign up.
Okay. And right now, there's nothing, oh wait, did you mention there's one, there's one that's on the radar?
There's, there's a couple that are on the radar. There's a basic exterior firefighting course. That's paid through the state. The firefighter one's paid through the state. There's firefighter two, which is something that the village would be paying for. That's coming up. They have pump operator, which is coming up, which would be a village expense. Edge company, which would be a village expense. Firefighter survival, which would be a village expense. And truck company, which would be a village expense.
So these are all ones that are, that the Orange County has announced that they're going to do?
Yep.
They just haven't come up with the dates?
They have, so like, if you go online, they have a signup thing, signup website. And for the firefighter two, it's five different classes ranging between fifteen and twenty hours each. And they range from September twenty-third to, well, September third to. And they range from September 23rd to, well, September 3rd to October 21st.
Okay. So what, here's my suggestion in regards to this, then. You already have, you just named at least four or five that the village would end up paying for. Can you give me, can you, can you provide the board, you know, schedule? Meaning like, well, who you anticipate taking it?
We don't, we don't, we encourage everyone, we can't anticipate anyone to take these.
Okay.
You know, and, and I'm, I'm not trying to pick on.
That's fine. And some of them, we, we don't expect a lot of people to take. And engine operator, pump operator.
Yeah.
There, there's not many folks who are ready to take that. Tom did not mention EVOX, so that's not on the list. We would hope that everybody would take it. But, you know, it's, it's availability. You know, folks volunteer for this time and, and people can't always make the plans. I would be shocked.
Yeah.
Shocked if we win as high as $20,000.
$20,000, you're saying for next year, or you're saying?
For next year.
For next year, for, for the, calendar or budget year?
Either or.
Okay. All right. No, because I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking the rest of the year. I don't want to, are you, are you, what I'm talking about right now is two things. One is, are you looking for training to be the stipend, to be effective now, going through the rest of this, the rest of this year, we use calendar year? Or are you looking forward saying, okay, you know what, let's, let's put this, we could put this in our budget for next year? You tell me.
I, I would actually like to go retroactive, because there is, there is training that has happened since New York State made the enabling legislation. I can give you a number on that. It would not be very high.
Retroactive to what date? This year?
Of 2025.
Okay.
Joe, Mr. McKay, is that something we'd be able to do retroactively?
Charlie, when you say retroactive?
I don't know.
So those are, I mean, I don't know specifically if the program would cover that. You know, obviously if you're taking it and certified, you may be able to, to bill it, you know, up to a certain amount of time. So I could talk to Charlie offline and try to figure that out.
Budget-wise, we, that's, that's a significant amount for, that we've spent, yeah.
Well, no, I, when you, when you said 20,000, I was like, you were indicating 2,900 to 4,100, so.
That's what I said. I would be shocked.
Yes.
If I was going. There's an incentive there. So hopefully more people would take more training.
Yeah.
And hopefully it would be higher, higher than 4,000.
Yeah.
I can think of as high as 20,000.
Okay.
Chief, are you saying you, you would never expect it to get that high in a budget year?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So, yes, Mike?
And, and I don't know if we shared it with you, the breakdown that the captain put together for the, what each course would cost. The most expensive one looks to be truck company operations. It's a, it looks like 34 hours. It's $500. Works out to $14.70 an hour to take over this class. And to be quite honest, I don't want to spend the chief's budget, but it's probably something that could be easily absorbed in the current budget and then planned over for, for next year.
That's, I'm fine with it. The, all I need from, all I need from you, Charlie, or the captain, or, or Mike, and that is, can you give us, I, I'm, can you give me a somewhat of a projection of like, for the remainder of the year, potentially what courses, how many people, so you can give me a projection, financial projection of how much it's, it's going to cost?
Five grand.
Can you put it in writing?
Does that?
Just like, like?
Can you put it through the board of fire commissioners?
And does that, since we talked about the, I don't know if retroactive is the?
Hold on one second. Does that include the retro, Charlie?
Like from January 1 till?
Yeah.
The end of this year, or?
Let me sit down and look.
Okay. This, this is why I'm saying it, please put it in writing, because I know you got a, there's a couple of moving parts here. That you got the retro, which he's going to look at. So if you include, include the retro, all right, make that as a subset, but include the retro, and give me a projection of, or give us, excuse me, a projection of what you're thinking about the remainder of the, of the year. All right.
Assistant Chief Trainer, the, when you say that the course costs $500, I'm sorry, I, I'm confused now, which is a?
That would have been what the payment would be to the firefighter?
Right.
And then let's not forget, it's $14.70 an hour.
Yeah.
Plus they have to pay state and federal tax on that.
On, on the stipend, I understand.
So it's, it's really?
So the, but that value, the $500, is what's set in the legislation based on the number of hours that the course takes? Or is it?
No.
Oh, oh, based on the?
That's the maximum you can get. If I take an eight-hour course and the village decides to give me $500 for it, that's, that's, that's what it is. We took the approach of breaking everything down hourly, so it'd be easier to digest. So there's ranging from, you know, a $48 class to a $500 class.
Okay. But again, that, if I'm, unless I'm misunderstanding?
The village is only ever going to pay at most $500 per class to a firefighter.
And that's set in the legislation?
That's, that's set in the legislation.
Got it. Thanks.
And EV bill is like $28.
EV fire?
Training.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any, any other discussion? All right, Charlie, if you, if you can get us that, all right, we can, we can address it next month.
August 12.
All right. Thank you. All right. Our last item. All right. I received a letter, well, the board received a letter from the Fire Commission, Board of Fire Commissioners. And this is in respect to the replacement of tower ladder 413. As you indicate here, it's unavoidable. And you advised, it's recommended that the board approve purchasing 100,000, for $100,000, the, a used aerial device, and sign a contract to have the device refurbished and mounted to a new apparatus that costs approximately $2 million. And we know that Mr. Wilbur presented this to us, the Fire Apparatus Fleet Review and Assessment back in 2023, or actually 2024. And let me just see here. He went through the history of, of us purchasing the last tower ladder back in 2012, was it?
2012, yeah.
2012, yes. And then you, you bring up the replacement options. And everyone has, you all have this letter, right? Okay. So first, you, you advise in regards to the refurbished apparatus. So that would be $2 million, or buy a new unit for $3 million. And the $2 million, that doesn't include the additional 100,000 for the aerial. And then a used apparatus would be, indicate a short-term solution and cost savings upfront, but likely to lack critical safety features. And then the third option is no, no action. And you advise that it puts the village at risk because the replacement parts are not readily available, and the apparatus is already outdated, unreliable, and missing modern safety features. So, okay, I'm going to open up to the board for discussion in regards to, because I have some questions, but you guys can go ahead. Excuse me, trustees.
Is it Commissioner Gianpolo, or, sorry, Chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners, Gianpolo that I should ask? Who am I talking to? Charlie, anybody?
Everybody.
Everybody? Hi, everybody. Just on the recommendation, I'm, the wording is, I think I'm confused. It's, it's recommended the village board approve $100,000 for the purchase of a used aerial device, and have it refurbished and mounted to a new apparatus at a cost of approximately $2 million. But then on the replacement options, where it says refurbished apparatus, the village could purchase a refurbished or rebuilt tower ladder for approximately $2 million, or buy a new unit for $3 million. When you say new in the recommendation here, do you mean in either a refurbished or a brand new?
A brand spanking new ladder truck would be roughly $3 million.
The new under recommendation would be new to us.
New to us. So that could be a refurbished unit.
Will be. The, well, the, the truck is new, right?
Wait.
The truck is new, the boom is used.
Are we saying that we buy the boom for $100,000 and then refurbish it for $2 million?
No, we buy the boom for 100.
Right. Refurbish it for?
Refurbish it for?
It's included in that.
Included in that, that price.
Okay.
And then we buy a brand new rig, a brand, brand new truck to put it on, for 2 million more. So it comes down to 2 million one.
All right. But I'm seeing then on the refurbished apparatus, the 2 million, as listed here, is for a refurbished truck unit, whereas 3 million is the price that's listed for a brand new.
The refurbished is the?
So the recommendation is for a refurbished?
It's unclear, and I apologize.
No, that's okay.
So either way, it's a brand new truck?
In the end.
Even the 2 million option or the 3 million option? It's a brand new truck?
3 million is everything's brand new?
Right.
2 million is?
Is for the refurbished aerial.
A new truck plus a refurbished ladder.
Brand new, the ladder part or the aerial part.
And how old is that? Like, it would be refurbished, what, what year are we talking about that it's refurbished from? What's that?
It's 1970s vintage. Uh, 74?
The, the part that's, that's the, that's considered the ladder or the boom.
Yeah.
It's the aerial device, that part. But it's refurbished to current standards.
To current standards.
So that wouldn't, you, we wouldn't be looking at repairs on that, or that failing in any way?
It'll all be brand new. It'll be new. It's refurbished. They take it to the factory and they do the whole? Think of it as certified pre-owned.
Gotcha.
Yes. Bill, is that clear now?
Yes. Thank you very much. I have another question. I asked, I, I asked, I think, a wrong email address, but I wonder if the, the replacement outlook plan that you had proposed a while back, I wonder if there's an electronic version of that. I'd love to have it, if I can, if I can Excel.
Are you talking the financial plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get that.
Thank you so much.
So I just have, I, I don't, I just joined the board recently, so I don't have the packet that was submitted in 2023, though some of the information was shared with me. So please bear with me while I ask some questions. When, so when would the initial money, and I can, I can see this chart here that Lori Beth is so graciously sharing with me. So the initial $100,000 would be due when? And then how would this be paid out? And when would the remaining monies be due if we went with the refurbished and the $2 million?
So the, the $100,000 would be due now, current year, to get that work done. The, the $2 million for the chassis would be in 2028, when Seagrave delivers.
In a like a lump sum type of fashion, or?
They would want a lump sum, but I assume.
Yeah.
Yep.
If I may, you could get discounts if you prepay on some of those items. So you can make payments leading up to delivery. And sometimes the manufacturer will give you a discount if you do that.
So that's a three-year, we order it now, we get it in three years?
Sign the contract now.
Right. No, right. That's what I meant.
That's, that'll be time on the fire truck right now.
How many, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Tiffany?
No, I'm fine. That was my question.
So let me ask you this in regards to, because I did this in 2012 when this came up with the tower ladder, in regards to a used apparatus. How much would a used apparatus cost?
We haven't looked at the current prices.
And when I say used, it's, it's a couple of options. One is used, and you're talking about refurbished. So, you know, you're calling, you're calling it, what were you calling it?
It's a CPO.
What's that?
Certified, reowned.
Yes.
Used is just?
Yes.
Another rig from Long Island or wherever it's from in the country.
Yeah.
Right? We don't, we, we didn't price that. That's, that's not, wasn't on our radar.
Can we price that? Can we get a price on that just for comparative purposes? And so we can have a, an informed decision?
If I may, in 2012, we bought a 12-year-old aerial device for $250,000. I'm assuming if you were to buy something in that same neighborhood, you're probably talking three quarters to a million dollars, considering we just bought a 25-year-old used engine for $60,000. And then 12 years later, you're in the same boat.
Right.
If you purchased the refurbished model, that, that vehicle will be certified and usable for the next 30 to 40 years.
Right.
So you're, you're getting your, your value on the back end of it.
I just want to make, I just want to make clear the word, the term refurbished, because I know the aerial is refurbished. The chassis is brand new. Let me ask you this. Are there used vehicles that become refurbished? Meaning completely, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
That's what, this is where I get?
Once they, once they hit the 25-year-old mark?
Yes.
They're no longer recommended for use. So even if it's refurbished at age 15?
Yes.
You're only getting another 10 years out of it.
Understood.
Oh, so they're not, so once it's refurbished, it's not like it gives it a new date of life?
No. Doesn't get a new point on date. No. And that's why Mr. Wilbur recommended this, because it's meeting in the middle.
Hmm.
You, you still get it as a, it's, it's considered brand new in the eyes of the National Fire Protection Association.
Yeah.
Because it has all the current safety standards and everything else. Whereas if you're old, if you buy a used, it's considered used and it's, those standards when it's built.
There, there's also an operational advantage. The refurbished route, we would be able to get the truck with a single rear axle, more appropriate for village roads and getting it into the tighter spots. Cliffside Park up on the mountain. The new vehicles, the new $3 million vehicles, you know, with the tank and rear axle.
Which the fire we had in Denver up unstable way was a problem. And that light driveway up in there.
So another question. What's the condition of the one that is currently in use? And do you have to have this for 2028? Or is 2029 a possibility? I know that's not what you want to hear. I'm just trying to make the most informed decision possible, given, you know, we, we're fiduciaries for the village and we, we have the $1.2 million pumper coming and some building issue. You know, we have a lot of expenditures which are needed and, and worth it. But in order to plan out our, our fiscal future, so to speak, just wanted to ask.
The, the current vehicle is working. It's working properly. But we, we are rolling the dice by keeping it. American La France manufacturer of the vehicle is out of business. So we cannot, if it does go down, we cannot get parts. There, there's a very similar truck across the river at Firematic. It's American La France LTI. It's been sitting there at a service for over a year. We cannot get the parts.
Understood.
So again, going back to the, the financial plan, I'm seeing the, and correct me if I have the wrong piece of equipment, but ladder number one listed here for 2030 is when the projection would be?
So there, there are, it's, the options of the ladder, which is on, we have the schedule. One, not the financial plan.
Okay.
In the book, the, the one option was the refurbishment, which would be 2020, new vehicle, would be 2030. And I assume he did 2030 to give more time to build up a couple of hundred grand to make the purchase.
I see. So option A, buy a used aerial scope boom and remount it on a new Seagrave chassis in 2028. Option B, or C, replace it with a new mid-mounted 100-foot aerial tower, tower ladder in 2030.
So, and that's related to your question, Trustee Galigan. 2028 is not a drop dead date, but extending it further, it is rolling the dice.
Thank you.
And if I may, for that, to your point, if you extend that another year, in 2035, you're going to be purchasing another pumper tanker. Or, I'm, I'm sorry, not a pumper tanker. No, that's.
Engine.
It'd be 1.7 million. So that's why, I don't know if you've seen the, the financial schedule we put together?
Briefly.
That's why they're all kind of scheduled out so that? That's why they're all kind of scheduled out, so that the, the payments are all dictated by what years are being built and purchased. Otherwise, if you keep pushing it out, then you're gonna be caught in the same boat you are kind of now, where you have two of them in close proximity, each other have to be replaced.
The ladder that we have now, I understand the company is out of business, so they're not making any new parts. Is there any way that we could get anything for the one that we have now? If we acted, obviously, quickly?
You could, it'd be very minute, what you could get, it's twenty-five years old, nobody's buying.
Basically just selling off parts?
Yeah.
Of it?
We have, we have emergency warning lights that are broken on the current one. We can't get them replaced, we have to replace all the lights, it's twenty-five thousand dollars to replace them all.
If Eugene had somebody's used truck, he could fix everything.
If I can, American La France, like they said, is out of business. So say we smash a door on that thing tomorrow, you'd be lucky if you find a door, so now you're done. I called on lights, like the chief said, can't get them. So you gotta try and redo stuff to make it work. LTI is no longer in business, they got bought out by somebody else. We have a company in Pennsylvania that has a few parts. Sometimes I lucky when I call down there, he says, I got one left, you're getting the last one, that's all that's left in the country. So you're, and, and every, every year or every month, you just keeps getting kicked down the road. The price is going up, the two million's gonna be five million in a couple of years, you know, it's just, it just keeps snowballing. Parts are hard to get, our newest pumper is a two thousand and five, you're already looking at twenty years there. I mean, the parts are hard to get for that. So the technology is just passing by everything, and they're not, you know, they're not keeping the old stuff no more. So I don't know if that helps you out at all, but.
No, it's taking everything into consideration, because last month, Charlie, did you bring it up? We have to replace your packs. And what's that gonna be about? Cost-wise, how much?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And then we got, look, I'm just looking at everything financially. I, I get where you guys are coming from, and I'm not saying no. What I'm saying is that Eugene was just bringing up that, you know, the costs keep going up, but we have to also recognize that we're just, we're spending one-point-two-million dollars on a truck that's gonna be delivered next year. So what I'm just pointing out to the, to the board is, these packs have to be replaced, two fifty to five hundred thousand, Charlie? Okay, and then we have the building.
Is that upcoming budget?
That's something that's, that, yeah, when?
We're, we're, so we're up against it with those also. Our, our packs are no longer manufactured, they're not going to be making parts for them in the near future than the base masses, so they're just obsolete. They're, they're working, we, we maintain our equipment really, really well. So they, they've served us a very long time, but now they're obsolete.
So with that, are you gonna include that, are you gonna include in your, in next year's budget, Charlie? For the, are you replacing all of them at one time?
Yes.
Okay.
Because one thing we're not going to do is run with two different types of packs.
Okay.
That's dangerous, we train everybody on the same thing.
Got it.
There was a, there was a death up in Kingston not terribly long ago. Part of it is suspected the firefighter was using a pack that he was not trained on, so we're going to do them consistent across the board.
Got it, got it, okay, all right. And I know the building, that's probably, if I had to guess, I don't know, Manny?
With the building, we, we're way behind, I mean, we are, we are pushing the envelope there. I've been holding off, we're not writing anything else, but we need to take care of that. I wrote that before, I think, two years ago at this point.
Yeah, no, and I, I, look, ballpark figure, I, I, from what I understand, I don't know, I got it from you, Manny, or maybe Jason, I don't know. It sounds like at least a couple hundred thousand, two fifty, I'm not, I'm not even, I'm not sure. That's, that's the number I, I, I understand it to be. So.
And, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Is that number that you're giving in regards to the building just to put it up to Manny's code?
We'll call some lines, yes.
Manny's program.
All right.
If, if I could just point out.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're talking, we're one-point-two, one-point-three-million-dollar pumper tanker, one-point-eight, two-million-dollar tower ladder.
Two-point-one at least.
Yeah, I think that's on the high side, to be quite honest. But you have to understand that, that apparatus is charged for protecting over four-hundred-million dollars worth of property. You know? It's, it's something that, if you don't have the proper equipment, your ISO rating, I don't know if many of you are aware of that, that affects the property owner's.
Yeah.
Insurance rates. So if they're not gonna pay higher taxes for proper equipment, they're gonna pay higher insurance rates. So it's a pay-me-now, pay-me-later type of thing.
Two other questions in regards to the new engine that we got, well, new-used, the sixty-thousand one. Is that, once we, once we get the new one, the replacement four-twelve, are we gonna surplus that?
Eventually, yes. There's not gonna be enough room in the base, for starters. It's always been the intention with the new rig to replace the tanker and an engine.
That's, yeah, that was my next question, replacing the, so once we get that, do we get rid of the tanker?
We're definitely getting rid of the tanker. We might want to consider hanging on to the new-used four-one-two as a reserve. We have a year to look at that.
Okay.
About how much do you think we could surplus the tanker for, just?
Five dollars, fifteen grand maybe, maybe a little less.
Okay. All right, that's helpful, at least we know that.
That's been, you know, what year is it?
Ninety-one.
Yeah, ninety-one.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the board? Well, I know Trustee Galliano has to look at, look at the report. We will, we, actually, no, one of the, did you ask? We wanted to, did you want to meet with Rick and Charlie? Indi, not individually, just Rick and Charlie? Did you, someone asked, right?
Yeah, I, I was curious if we could do follow-up and just?
Yeah, just hash out any questions that might come up.
So maybe like at the, prior to, you know, prior to the, the works, our next, well, actually, we only have one meeting, okay? So depending on how much executive session, maybe if we're gonna meet earlier than that, instead of six o'clock, if we can make, I don't know, five-thirty or something like that?
What's the date on that meeting? Eighteenth.
We can meet individually too, right?
Yeah, if you want to do that, that's fine too.
Yeah. I can do five-thirty just.
What's that?
I can do five-thirty on that date if you're so inclined.
So maybe we'll tee it up to meet Charlie, Rick, and do we want anybody else?
We'll accommodate, whatever you want to do.
So right now, we'll just tee it up for the, for the eighteenth at five-thirty, right before our work, our executive session.
You can reach out to us if you have any questions, if you want to meet for that individually, for the information.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for the info, we appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the rest of the agenda, it's just, last up is public comment. Any, anybody in the public who'd like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, let's move on to, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
This thing on? Is it on? Yeah?
Say your name and your address.
Oh, well, I'm Tom Trainer. I live at One Elsie Circle, I also doubled down as the captain of the Storm King Edge and Company. As you see, we do have a lot of members here in, in attendance for this meeting. Couple of the things you had on the agenda tonight are very important to us. The things that we do and the things that we train for, we do not take lightly. Not only do we train to better ourselves, but we train to better protect this community. And I think we're all in agreement that this community deserves the best proper care and attention that it deserves. I think that there is a little bit of lack of education of, of what exactly it is that we do. I think if you look across this room, every member here has a different story about how something could have went differently at a fire, and it would have been a better outcome. And if something would have went more negatively, someone in this room may not be here. When we talk about apparatus and equipment, that's our lifeline inside of a fire. You know, we do not get paid to do this, but we want to do this. You know, we really want to help each other, we want to help our neighbors, we want to help the community. Myself, I think it's, I don't want to say disappointing, but it, it takes me back a little bit to, to, to hear the, the possibilities of, of our members not getting the best equipment that they can. I think the decisions moving forward, we need to think about it a little bit more heavily, you know? In two thousand and twelve, the chief at the time, he did the right thing, you know, and, and, and he weighed out, hey, listen, the village is in a, in a financial hole here. So it was our understanding then that, hey, you might not get it now, but the next time when you're up, we're gonna be set up for success. The commissioners-in-chief, they, they gave you the, the EVR report, and the question was, is how can we pay for it? You know, they went back to the drawing board, and they went with, with the CPA, and, and they came up with a, a payment plan, right? So at this point, we, we've given everything that we've can to kind of help out the village. I don't want to, you know, talk on other departments here, but I think we're the only department that's ever done that, you know? And like I said, I, these guys are, are what I do it for, you know? They elect me to, to speak up for them, and that's what I'm gonna do. But just please, you know, do right by us, that's all we ask. You know, I know it's not easy, because you gotta worry about a lot of other things, but I, we need to protect these guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all right, in regards to FYI, the fire commission meeting is August eleventh at six P M. The zoning board is meeting August fourteenth, God, remind me of that. Zoning board is meeting August fourteenth at seven P M. The Cornwall Cheerleaders Car Wash is August sixteenth at nine to two. Village Hall Parking Lot Movie and Trivia Night at Dunning U Farm, August sixteenth at six P M. The movie is Ferris Bueller. Village Board Business Meeting and Work Session is gonna be Monday, August eighteenth at seven. Planning Board Meeting is August nineteenth at seven. And the Cornwall Varsity Swim and Dive Team Car Wash is August thirteenth from eleven to four. Okay, I'll go around the horn, any comments? Let's start with Trustee Galliano.
Sure. Thank you all for being here, I know how tremendously important these issues are. Please do not mistake our questions, thoughts, concerns, contemplation for a, a lack of appreciation. I always put myself in the position that if it's my house on fire, trust me, I'm appreciating, and you guys have shown up at my house a couple of times, not, not for fires, thankfully, but, you know, I, I don't, I won't speak for anybody else that's sitting up here, but I think every person up here definitely values you and the services that you provide. It's a, it's a, it's a matter of managing and figuring out a way to pay for everything and being responsible to, to the taxpayers as well. So I just wanted to state that, please don't, please don't mistake, again, only speaking for myself, my questions for a lack of appreciation or thoughtfulness or, or concern. And that goes for our EMS and our, and our police and, and every other department that we have as well. That being said, you know, I certainly will go back and review the, the twenty twenty-three report in detail, and I will give it my full attention, thank you.
Lori Beth?
I want to recognize the Fireman's Fair that we had this week, although it exhausted me, harmful to me. But it was a, it was a great, it was a great week, and I appreciate all of the hard work that you guys put into it. And it, it, it was great, this year, this year especially, I thought there was a ton of people, the food was great, fireworks, amazing. It was a good time, and I think that's all I have, thanks.
Trustee Brain?
Sure. Thank you for making this the best-attended village board meeting we've had this year, I think.
Yes.
And to echo what Trustee Galliano said, I, I also look to do my due diligence and really appreciate the efforts and the work of the fire department, and your safety is, of course, paramount. The, and I wanted to also echo what Trustee Palliotta said, the fair was great, it was really fun, and I went down there a couple of nights, and it was great. Donahue Farm, there was, the camp drop-off seems to be going well. The, our day camp is happening at Camp Olmstead, and, and the kids are getting dropped at Donahue Farm and walking through the woods over there. My understanding is it's going smoothly, so that's great. And I attended the first of two scheduled weddings at the farm this year. It, for the first dance, the farm produced a rainbow, and then for the remainder of the dance, it was an incredible sunset. And it's a great place to have a wedding, so if anybody's looking to get people in a place to have a great wedding, Donahue Farm is it. And thanks, everybody, for the support on the EV chargers, we had, we had a lot of talk about it, and I'm glad to see they broke ground, and we'll get the final kinks worked out. Thanks, everybody.
Very good. All right, I'll second what Trustee Palliotta said, and what Tiffany said, and what Trustee Brain said. Thank you very much for the information in regards to the tower ladder, and we will do our due diligence, we'll meet you on the, on the eighteenth. And thanks for the, the Fireman's Fair was great, went three nights, so much appreciated, thanks for doing that every year. And that's all I have to say, so I will make a motion to adjourn, can I get a second?
Second.
Call the paper?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, God.
We gotta get, we gotta get pads.
I'm like, I'm gonna lift. I need a little boost. Be a boost up.
Yeah, yeah, hold on one second, let me do this, wait, wait, let me do this. Can't remember, I can't forget my pizza, which I have.